Awesome. We are live. Welcome to the Town of Groveland Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd. Will you all please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, good and just as well.
All right, I don't see that we have any public comment and no department comments. So we're going to start with Whittier Regional Technical School.
So, I'm just putting out, I'm going to accuse myself, as you know, an employee of Whittier Regional Vocational School.
Absolutely. All right, I went and met with them on the 20th, like I had stated, and I got some of the answers. In terms of students that were not accepted, they said it was an average of 1% that weren't accepted. How they accepted people was based on grades. They gave, it was a point system. Grades, an interview with the student, attendance, behavioral issues, and recommendations by the school. Which, to Ed's point, when you look at some of the percentages, some of the more affluent towns seem to have a much higher percentage of acceptance, and that would probably be why. So, the new system is supposed to be geared towards being more blind. But with that being said, with 200 to 300 people on the waiting list, Groveland potentially could have no students, since it would be a blind lottery. And we only have 10% of what's on the waiting list in the school currently. So I think that's something to consider.
Is that the number? Is it 10% of the overall waiting list that is Groveland?
No, right now it's less, it's higher or less because there's only 222 people on the waiting list. Last time was 303.
Gotcha.
We have 300, 30 people, 35 people in Whittier right now. So, just roughly.
Approximately, okay.
Roughly speaking. But it was, it was a very good conversation I had with the two people in attendance. And they, they certainly gave me the information I was looking for. But it really makes it important to make sure we get the right number of seats available. I know some of the other people are worried about cannibalizing the other schools. I don't know. So has anybody given any more thought to what they would like to see in terms of number of seats at Whittier?
Yes, actually. Yeah, let me just bring something up, please. So, one thing that I was looking at between now and, or between our last meeting and now, was kind of that, those 10-year and 5-year averages that were in one of the documents that we got. And obviously, there is a down trend there, I think, I want to say around 16%. That's the number that's stuck in my head, between the 10-year and the 5-year average. The thing that, that concerns me, though, is exactly what you just brought up, is the, kind of, what it's being based on now. And so I think we should assume that if it's more of a blind, I think we need to assume if it's more of a blind system, that we need to try to have a minimum that's higher than what that 5-year, at least what that 5-year average is. I think that was, what I saw was, the 5-year average was 19 applied, 13 accepted, and 10 enrolled. I'd like to see us try to shoot for an average of, you know, maybe close to double that.
So in terms of the overall seats to make that happen, how do you do that?
Well, it's a good question.
Because ultimately, that's, that's the information that they want from us to try to, to try to move forward, if they even ask that, since they didn't ask, talk about it last meeting. I know that the superintendent is big on 1,500, which gives an extra 220 seats, which would cover the, the...
Current waiting list.
Yeah, the current waiting list, not the previous year's waiting list. I don't think the waiting list moving forward, even though the downtrend of our enrollment and several of the other small-town enrollments, because their population is aging out, and we haven't had a lot of new, younger people move in until very recently, that I think that may turn around. But the one thing that'll turn around, I think, is the overall enrollment request, just because the governor is going to be pushing to talk to the 7th and 8th year students about the benefits of going to Whittier, the technical school. And that's just going to spark up a lot more interest.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the reasons why I think shooting for a slightly higher number, trying to get a guarantee of a slightly higher number is important. And we talked about that at our last meeting, that that was, that outreach was going to be something happening going forward.
Right, and then the other thing is whether or not we can wait in the agreement to ensure that we don't get left, left out.
Has there been any discussion about that, guaranteed minimums per community?
Very briefly, only one person brought it up the last meeting. I believe it was Rowley, they made mention of that.
That, that's something that I think, you know, I would like to see something like that.
Now, in terms of the, the agreement itself, I know that we got it yesterday, and it's not a big rush to, to get a lot of input on the agreement itself, because that's going to take probably at least a year to, to sort out. But it is something I think we should, we should really start considering, looking at, particularly since we have a great opportunity to, to move forward with this. And I'd recommend looking at some of the other agreements from some other regional schools and seeing what they have, and how we can try to utilize that to better the chances for, for everybody in general. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, Ed?
Not a question, just a statement. I think the, the growing trend is more of the students are geared towards vocational education, going to the trades, than, than going to college. Some of these colleges, the, the price to, to go there is getting kind of prohibited, and it takes them way too long to, to pay off their, their loans, and for what they get out of it. So I, I think the more, the more, the better, that, as far as the, the enrollment. And I just like to see as many as possible get the, get the vocational education. You know, a lot of, not everybody is, is geared to go to college. And some of these, some of these students that go into the trades, they're doing quite well. They're, they're, some of them are making more than what these college-educated people are making. So, the more, the better.
Well, they said a lot of things I was going to say, but I agree, the increased state awareness of the benefits of vocational schools. I think the new location is going to make it very appealing to people. That will definitely spark some interest. Higher cost of college. And I think another important aspect to think about is Whittier not necessarily just being a vocational school for trades, right? They have the technical aspect, too. Engineering, robotics, those things are appealing. I know that Penn Tucket is trying to offer those kinds of programs as well, too. Whether or not they're complementary to each other, I'm not really too sure about that. But there is a little bit of overlap with some of the technical classes.
Yeah, well, I know, I know when, when I was at high school age, electronics was big. So robotics, I still consider that to be a vocational type of class. I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's great that the high schools are trying to bring some of that back, too, because there originally were two different types. But I know that in terms of college, I think they're utilized, especially if they can get the campus on the same site as Essex, as the community college. They utilize that a lot. And right now, they say 41% of the students that are at Whittier also attend the college as well. So that's a, that's a pretty big percentage, which, which, which why I was questioning whether or not it was still a vocational school. Because it's important, because the whole point is to create workers and reinforce the workforce. That's, which is extremely important, especially economically for the entire state of Massachusetts. And one of the reasons why the governor is, is pushing for the extra 3,000 seats. So then the other issue is, even if we do push for more seats, DES always can shoot it down. But then the overall cost has to be sold to the general public who vote on it. And we all saw how the vote went last time, which is one of the reasons why we try to talk about this as often as possible, make sure people understand the importance of it, the fact that it's here and it's coming. But of course, they still don't have any type of price tag on it. So it makes it a little more difficult to, to guess about where we, where we want to go. I know originally, when they put the school, the number of seats forward for the Whittier School Project, they did 2,100 seats. That was what they originally pushed forward. And they were told that you could have 1,480, I believe, is what, what they, DES came backwards. So I think 1,500, now that you have a new location, you have an entirely new perception of what a school, what the purpose of the vocational school is and what's required, and how you're going to be pushing people there, I think it's going to be, I think it's just short, myself. So I was, I was looking for, for more. But it's up to the, the board to come across a number that we can all agree on, because that's what I'm going to be pushing forward to them. So, what do you think? I know you would say more, more is better, Ed, but do you have an actual number on that?
Uh, no.
No? Steve?
Not yet. I think, one thing that would be interesting to see, and I don't know if we could get it, but it would be interesting to see if we could get any data from Penn Tucket about, or just maybe from Whittier, about students who applied that weren't accepted, what the graduation rate was for them if they didn't go to Whittier. I don't know if Penn Tucket would have that. The same, and along those same lines, maybe the college acceptance rate for that same group of students over a period of time. Because that would be interesting to see in terms of what the success rate is if someone applies, doesn't get in, and doesn't go. Because I think that would lead towards needing a higher number.
Right.
Well, I don't know if you get those numbers. Those would be challenging.
I don't know, I don't know if it's something that the, the school district would have.
Or at least some sort of testament.
Yeah.
If I may ask, yes?
Well, you mentioned grades as part of the criteria for enrollment. And so obviously, those are the better grades, one might, might get it. But maybe those that aren't cutting it at, in, in the high school are the ones that deserve to be there. They should be there.
Right, and I agree with that 100%. And that's one of the things that I was shocked, and why I had requested the board write the letter that we did to the, to the governor when it was open comment. I'm still very hopeful that that's the whole reason why they, they put it on hold. However, the new system that they're going to be using, even if it is as it is, doesn't take grades or anything like that into consideration. So, I mean, it has its plus and minuses. It's, it's definitely a good thing, but it only really works if you have the seats for the, for the children to go. And so that's something that we, we can hope for. I know that Whittier is also a little concerned that if they end up with too many kids that require the special attention that they, they used to have when they, when they went there, that they wouldn't be able to function the same. So they've gotten away from a lot of that. So it's, it's, it's challenging all the way around. It's just, it's very odd to see. Did you have a number you'd like to throw out?
I don't.
No?
I know, that's what you've been asking for, and we just can't seem to commit. But there's just a lot of factors.
Yes. And like I said, I know when I brought it up at the, at the meeting, I was very much the minority.
Really?
So they were, they were 1,280. We don't want to push that cost onto the people.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I can understand it, but it's, it's, I think, very short-sighted. I think overall with, with you don't increase the seats, I think you're pushing a larger cost and a much greater burden onto the residents with the, with the lack of workforce that we have already. That creates a problem as it is. So I think, but that's, that's my opinion, that's why I keep pushing it. And so if the, if the board does agree that should be more seats, I, I can definitely push that, even if I don't put a number to it. At least we're in agreement to that.
At those meetings, has there been any discussion about enrollment trends in other vocational schools in the state?
No.
That would be an interesting statistic to have data on.
Yeah, that's an easy one to get, I think. I think you can pull that offline.
Yeah, I was just looking at those numbers, Essex North Shore Agriculture and Technical. They have like 1745.
Yeah.
So...
And they just had a big expansion.
Right.
So I know, I know, and the reason why they did it is because they have such a demand at those, at that school.
It just might make the case for more seats if, if all of the other vocational schools are seeing facility improvements lead to higher enrollment, which you would kind of expect, but actually having that data might say like, hey, we need a, we might need a larger number.
Yeah, well, and, and like I said, I mean, even if it's not the improvement of the facility that creates more drive to go to the school, it's just the overall environment that has been and continues to get pushed more and more from legislation down saying, hey, we need more of this, we need more of this, we're going to be promoting this, we're going to be pushing this, that I think is going to just create more. So I think...
Yeah, there's a lot of factors that could...
Yeah. But yeah, you know, a nice stu, a nice new school. I don't know, I think it's only, it's 30, 39 vocational schools in Massachusetts?
That's what I just saw here, it was like 36, maybe? Yeah, 36.
Yeah, so I, I certainly can get some of that information, too. Georgetown's, I know, is in a spot, because I think their enrollment for their high school this year was 37. That's pretty rough. So yeah, it'd be interesting to take a look at that.
Is there a rough, I, I think it was in one of the documents, I don't have it here. Is there a rough timeline on when we need to get a recommendation back to them on a, on a proposed size?
No, because it can change, you can change it. So not until they start the actual process, which I don't even think we've officially been accepted in, so. It's, it's, we still have to prevent, present them with a few other things to... We presented them with some stuff in August. Right, the letter that we had signed?
So we had to provide a letter from all of the 11-member communities stating that they would entertain revising the regional school agreement, that we would all put in financially for the cost of the feasibility study. And we had to move forward with a feasibility study analyzing the new location in addition to the current site, which a lot of resources have already gone into. But those are the three thresholds that the MSBA required in order to be considered for site eligibility.
Right, and we still hadn't gotten a response back from submitting that, whether they actually accepted it?
So we have not, we have not provided those additional items, correct? We only provided the letter.
The letter. So yeah, it's, it's a very slow process. I'm not, not a fan of how slow it is. You need it, you do it, but that's not something that we can realistically do, so. Unless anybody else has any other things they would like to ask?
No, I was just looking at that, there was a, something in our meeting on 7/21 that had some dates in it. So I just didn't know where this decision aligned with those dates. It looks like it went from like September of 2025 and...
Yeah, but I don't think they specifically listed the number of...
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was a specific milestone in that list of dates where we, they needed to...
No.
Was that back to the...
I don't believe there was. There was just something they, they wanted us to talk about so they could think about what they were actually going to do. And we tried to gear it towards what we could get the people to pay for without knowing any actual prices.
Right.
And so we would be able to move forward, so we wouldn't get stuck in the same situation where it gets voted down.
Sure.
So we're in the site eligibility phase of the MSBA process. So that allows us, so we had successfully submitted a statement of interest, and so now it starts the formal process for the future building. But it is still the eligibility phase.
Okay. So it's still only eligibility. And we, we won't find out how much they're going to be funding until after the feasibility study, correct?
I'm sorry?
Ed, we won't find out how much they plan on funding until after the feasibility study?
Correct.
After they come back and say, okay, we're going to be paying for this much.
So the next step in the MS, MSBA process is expected in early fall, which is about to begin, and will be the establishment of a formal school building committee. And then this, in partnership...
Which we already submitted, and they already voted on that.
They believed so at their last meeting, to explore potential project options. And at that point, we'll narrow down on those details.
Awesome, thank you. Any else? Then I guess we'll move on, you can rejoin us. We'll be talking about municipal leases.
Yes, so this was a agenda item that was requested by Select Board Member Cashron Ellis a while ago. We had been working on establishing a lease for the Knox Building over at the Shanahan Fields when we were going forward with the construction of the new parking lot over at the Fields. And as part of that, she had called into question the other municipal leases that we had for the buildings that we use with the Historic Society at Washington Hall, as well as the Garden Club at the Little Red Schoolhouse. So I had an opportunity to pull those leases. The lease with the Garden Club is soon to be expiring at the end of the calendar year. The lease that we have with Washington Hall is still good for another two years. That being said, because we had tried to formalize the structure of the lease, we figured it would be best to coordinate those documents so that all of our municipal leases are reflective of one another and have the same items that we need to address as needed based upon the site specifics. So I sent over the leases to the town council, and they had provided some red line edits. And the leases that you have in your packet are the leases that have been reviewed and recommended by town council for moving forward. And again, the summary that you have in your packet calls out the Knox Building specifically because the board has already voted on that lease. We were just waiting for some feedback from the Historic Society in regards to some of the language that has been vetted through the process, and they are good with the lease as it stands. So we just need to execute that document in order to move forward. And the difference between that lease and the other two leases is just to call out specifically that the Knox Building is not owned by the town. It is owned by the Historic Society. We are only looking at a ground lease at that particular location. The other two locations are town buildings and town-owned property. And again, that's 24 Broad Street for the Little Red Schoolhouse and 101 Washington Street, which is right next to the central fire, uh, excuse me, South, South Fire Station.
Anybody have any questions? Steve?
Just, I know I had mentioned this to you before, Rebecca. Just, I didn't see anything in there about who is responsible for maintaining the smoke alarms in those buildings. My understanding is it would be the town, so I just think that should be called out in there.
Correct, so I did have an opportunity to take a closer look. It is not listed in the two leases with the buildings. I did check with the building and facility supervisor, Steve McPherson, and he did confirm that we do the extinguisher and the fire alarm testing over at the Little Red Schoolhouse, but we do not currently do that at Washington Hall. But as you cite, that is a state law, so it is something that we should put into the agreement so I can work with the language and town council and just make sure that we add that somewhere in the document.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, just on, on the, I know we don't own the building and that they're dividing up between the Historic Society and whoever they end up leasing to, how the cost, and it says, so the person that's the lessor, the person that's living there, is responsible for major repairs to the premises excluding the building. So the town owns the land, so they're not responsible for anything on the land, right? So it's inside the building? I mean, what are we thinking is a major repair to the premises? I'm just concerned that when it says premises, do you mean the land or just inside the building?
That would be the land for that particular lease, not the building itself. But removal of the building or anything of that nature would be, would impact the, the premise and the land and would require approval process from the town before they were to make such a drastic change. But changing or renovating a bathroom or something of that nature, that's not within the purview or identified and as part of the lease.
Right, no, what I'm asking is the words in the agreement that say major repairs are, except the building, excluding the building. The person who's the lessor, that's the person living there, right?
No, that would be the Historic Society. The agreement is with the Historic Society, it is not with the individual.
It says the lessie is the Historic Society.
Exactly, not the, the individual that they...
That's what I just said, the lessor, L-E-S-S-O-R.
Lessor would be less.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about, not the lessie.
For which portion of the, so where in the agreement, just so I can read that?
The second dot there, open circle dot, it says, "Major repairs to the premises excluding the building owned by the lessie, owned by the Historic Society." So I'm just curious, you know, what constitutes a major repair?
So if they were bringing in a new utility, ripping up the driveway, excavating the grassed area, trying to put in a pool, something of that nature, where they're actually digging and/or interrupting and/or changing the area?
Right, so, well, so then I'm confused, because we're actually giving permission for them to alter the land that we're renting to the Historics, we're renting the land to the Historic Society, right? And then we're giving the person who's renting the building the right to dig up the land and put a pool in? I'm, I'm just kind, I just wanted an example of what, I know this is standard language, you have in the other ones, but when it says major repairs to the premises excluding the building, I'm just, I, I'm at a loss as to what kind of a repair that would be, that the person renting would have to pay it.
They're on sewer and water?
Correct.
So I imagine if the sewer line or the water line ruptured, it'd need to be replaced. We're not going to take responsibility for that, we're going to push that off under the Historical Society?
But...
Correct?
Correct.
But the Historic Society is the lessie. This says the lessor. Unless I'm, I've been reading it back so many times, I'm just not understanding the renter. Just call him the renter, okay? What major repair would they be responsible for excluding the building? That's what I'm, I'm seeking. I don't know if that language maybe shouldn't be there because of the, that's a different kind of lease than the schoolhouse on Washington Hall. That's my concern.
Okay, I can bring that concern back to council, and we can take a look at the language a little bit more closely.
Right, because I mean, it would just, I would ask if I was the renter, I'd say, well, what would I be responsible for? Right, because I mean, it would just, I would ask if I was the renter, I'd say, well, what would I be responsible for? What would be a major repair that I would have to pay for as a renter?
We can ask for a, um, a definition to be included as part of the agreement so that it's clearly delineated as to what would constitute a major repair.
That excludes the building?
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so I see, you're, you're reading C, right?
I'm reading, it's not, it's summary of the lease status and the second open dot on the Knox Building.
Different one, further up.
Different agreement?
Right, it is a different agreement because we don't own that building. And that's why I questioned, you know, you're telling the rentor that the rentor is going to have to be paid for a major repair that is excluding the build, I don't know. It just confused me, I couldn't even think of a, a thing that would be that. That's all.
So I think if you go further into the document and under section six, subsection C, it talks, the language is a little more clear, at least in my mind, it seems to be saying, they're responsible for anything in the building, but if something happens to the property itself that has to be repaired, then that's the town's responsibility because we own the actual physical plot of land.
But again.
We are the leaser.
Yeah.
No.
Well.
The town.
The land, yeah, we are the, we lease the land to the Historical Society and the Historical Society leases the building to somebody else.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which has nothing to do with any of these documents.
Right.
We're the lesser and the leasy is the Historic Society.
We're not the lesser on the Knox Building, we're not the renter.
No, because we don't touch the Knox Building, we don't have any lease here regarding the Knox Building.
Again, my question is about the, the renter, the person who rents this building.
We have no control over that, that's between the Historic Society in here and them.
I don't know why you're saying we should leave something in there that doesn't make sense. If it makes sense, someone should be able to explain it.
I can get clarification for sure and take a closer look at the language itself and in comparison to what you're describing.
Because we certainly don't want a situation with the triangle of the town, the Historic Society, and some person renting the building and something large happens and who, who's responsible?
Understood.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question. Um, I know I, we talked last time about, um, like the town building improvement plan. Are these buildings, because they're technically town buildings, are they part of that for like roof replacements and things like that? Is that?
They should be, they have not been historically, so I am trying to get them into the rotation. I think it's really important and we need to take an inventory and get a better understanding of what is needed in these buildings.
Right.
Um, so again, it, it's not been something that has been done, but it is something that I would like to strive for because it is ultimately our responsibility if something were to happen to these buildings.
Okay, it's on your radar. Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just a statement, I'm, I'm really glad that you, you got this together because I knew that during the pandemic, um, the Garden Club was struggling because they couldn't have their fundraisers. And, you know, the Little Red Schoolhouse, they really do try very hard to, to do what they can for it. But I think it is time for the town to also take some, some responsibility through CPA funds probably because that is a historic schoolhouse. It's, it's really cute if you've never been in it. And they, they, they have tried really hard to, to keep it up to snuff and it does, um, get visited during their sales and everything. And this year, um, they added in that you could order in advance online, which I personally loved, um, so you didn't have to try and find parking on the triangle. So, I mean, they've done a successful year, I would think, of fundraising, but I think the town should assess that building and make sure that, um, the, the structure of it is being kept up. Yep.
All right, well that will move on to intersection improvements, update and discussion on the status of Washington Street in Salem.
So this was an agenda item that was requested by the Select Board as part of the initial assessment of the intersection based upon some of the feedback that we had discussed as part of the Salem Street dam, as well as the upcoming construction of the Basilier Bridge and this being identified as a detour route. Uh, one of the first things that we need to do in order to figure out exactly what could be done to help improve the traffic and vehicle, um, movement in that particular intersection is to do a technical memorandum that would provide a traffic study, um, which would allow us to see exactly how many people are utilizing the intersection and also provide a road safety audit so that we can get a better understanding as to what improvements could be made. Um, so once we identify that information, we can then take that report and we can use that as a mechanism to apply for design permitting and ultimately construction funding. Uh, we do have chapter ninety funding, the proposal that you see in your packet is for about eighteen thousand dollars and we can move forward with that immediately so that we can get that data. And it will set us up so that we can start applying for grant funding um, come the February, uh, May timeframe so that we can see what we can do for next steps. So I just wanted to alert the board that we are moving forward with that and that if there is any additional information that you would like to share or you would like us to focus on, please let me know. And then I will continue to update the board as needed.
Yes.
Yes, so, um, I've had the concern, not just that intersection but others, but, um, I believe there's bus stops near there as well. And I don't think the crosswalks have been painted, nor the bus stops identified. And, you know, I heard from a resident, a horror story of a parent trying to cross over to the bus and a car and just barely missing the parent and, um, you know, this is the kind of traffic that happens during that commuter hour. The rest of the day, you know, it's not too big a deal, but, um, we don't have identified crosswalks at most of the major intersections on the south side of town. They haven't been updated and we don't have, um, bus stops identified so people know that they're approaching a place where children could be crossing to or standing on. And I, we used to always do the crosswalks right before school started. And then years ago, it felt, just kind of fell off after Barbara Kelly and I think retired, it just kind of fell off. And I kept thinking, oh, it's a comeback, but it hasn't. I don't think the crosswalks in South Groveland were painted in maybe ten years. I mean, maybe not ten years, but at least five or more.
So I know last year we did do some of the crosswalks in front of the Bagnell Elementary School and some of the other crosswalk locations, might have not done all of them. I do know that Arthur Marcos, the Highway Superintendent, is performing his own inventory to see exactly how many we have and what we need to do. And I do know that they have moved forward with purchasing their own equipment to do line painting themselves, which will make it a lot easier for us to respond accordingly when situations like this occur. So we can go out there and get the work done immediately instead of waiting to hire a contractor to come out and do that. So I do know that they are working together to assemble that list and to get that equipment so that they can get out there and, and, and do what's needed.
So, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, absolutely.
My concern is that like, yes, in front of Bagnell, but once you cross the tracks, um, at the bottom of, uh, Washington and Main, nope. Um, up at the center and Washington, heading up towards the four-way stop in First Foot, no. Um, up there at the four-way where there are bus stops, no. By Washington Park, no. I mean, you could barely see them. Yeah, I mean, if I wasn't from the town, I would not know that there should be, that there is a crosswalk kind of faded there. I would have no idea as I'm driving along. So I don't know how much longer, I understand we got a plan, we're trying to follow a plan, so I was kind of waiting, thinking they'll get to it this year and then they didn't and I was, um.
I don't believe they did any this year.
Well, we did it down by the walking path, we did it by Bagnell, we did it by the River Pines, you know, all those downtown. Nice, those are bright, bold, easy to see.
So I'll work with the Highway Department to see if they can move their plans along more quickly so that they can get out there immediately and make sure that they're taking care of the South Groveland side in addition to the areas where at Bagnell and down, um, in the downtown area.
If, if it's possible, I mean, I just, I don't, I know things kind of fell off before Arthur came, so I'm not saying it's our new Highway Superintendent. But it's getting year after year not done and that, that's a concern. Especially with the apartments going up. I think we're gonna see a pretty big increase in traffic in that whole side of town.
I'm trying to think of where the specific crosswalks.
Mostly down by the intersection. There is none really on the Salem Street proper.
You're right. There is no crosswalk, or the blinking light either.
Correct.
So you have no way.
So I imagine that might be why they, they weren't painting anything because they don't have.
Well, no, Washington Street has crosswalks.
Washington Street?
Yep.
Where?
Washington at Salem.
Washington at Salem.
The four-way stop with Center Street down there. And then at the bottom of the hill, um, by Liquor Store, there, there is a crosswalk, but you can't see it real well.
Bottom of the hill of the Liquor Store?
Yeah, and you know, Main Street.
Going back to Main Street?
Yeah, Main Street and Washington, there's a crosswalk.
Yeah.
I've used it.
Yeah, but at Washington and Salem, I don't believe.
No, I'm.
Any of those fours, any of those four.
As an intersection, you potentially should have one anyway, I mean, people are gonna be crossing there.
If you want them to cross there, yeah, you should put a crosswalk there unless they're also.
I know, I know some, some places crosswalks are assumed at all intersections because you're gonna be walking across the intersection. But, uh, but yeah, it'd be nice if they were, if they were painted and, and signed properly. To make them a lot more visible, so people will actually think about the fact that people might be crossing there. So maybe, maybe it's a little bit more about, uh, finding out where these crosswalks should be and, uh, coming across an agreement so we can have them put on the books, because I'm not sure that they are.
Right, I think there was one across from Madison's too also, maybe, I don't know.
Madison's?
Madison, yeah, right, yeah.
I think so.
I think because there was a bus stop on the other side of the road, I don't know if it's still there. They may have had one there at one point.
The one across from the Fire Department.
Oh, that one too, I forgot, yes, right by Ed's, right by Ed's house.
That's in Washington Street.
Yeah.
That one I've seen.
Yeah.
So that's like one.
But this proposal looks robust. I'd be really interested to see what comes out of it, especially like what you said, the apartment complex is a concern because you had mentioned opening, getting residences fall, September. And you work with the dam and then with the Basilier Bridge, which I know is a go to do. And I think that bridge is gonna be closed for years.
Years, yeah.
So, um, I think it's good to be proactive and.
How long did it take them to, uh, to COVID that, um, uptack?
That took much longer than was anticipated, I know because Ruth.
That wasn't really smooth.
Ask Ruth Rivard how much, they had to drive through Georgetown to get.
So we had to wait until the summer because we didn't want to impact the bus.
Yes.
So we had to wait until they ended and then we had an issue with the supply and then we had an issue with the torrential downpours that we were having since the crews actually lost a lot of their, their tools and supplies, um, due to a couple of those incidents. And then we had to enforce liquidated damages as it got closer because we wanted to get the road opened again for school traffic. So it was a relatively quick project, but there were a couple of hiccups that pushed us a little bit over.
Right, but I mean, from when school stopped until when school started is really when the road was closed.
Correct.
I mean, it ran a few days into school reopening, I remember.
Correct.
The Facebook post, so that wasn't very long at all.
Well, unless you had lived in that area and had to drive.
All the way down and around, I did that drive a couple of times.
I think for the residents that were impacted, it was, seemed longer than they thought it was gonna be, but you're right, they got it up and open.
So hopefully if we, when we move forward with the Salem, it'll, it'll run similarly and not, uh, not.
I think that was more about the bridge closure in Haverhill that is concerned, because that's a detour route for the bridge closure in Haverhill, which is a multi-year project.
Yeah.
Which, which bridges have they closed?
Bradford, Bradford to Haverhill.
Although.
Getting ready to.
Oh, they're finally gonna shut that?
Yeah, they need to be replaced. It took a bolt right underneath it, it's, it's scary to think what we drive on.
I would not want it either. I don't even, I don't drive over it. I go every which way around to avoid.
So you have to go to the bridge by the railroad or the bridge over here, so we're gonna get more traffic?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
Salem Street's gonna get a lot more traffic.
That's why.
Yeah, and then the school street's gonna back up.
Mm-hmm.
Can we charge a toll? fundraiser? Oh, you're from town, go through.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just, Steve? Two, or three, I guess. In the document, I noticed that they have the hours from typical weekday, seven AM to seven PM. Is there any flexibility to adjust that? Because as someone who lives there, I can tell you that road is busy starting at six AM. Um, I think you'll miss a big portion of the morning commute if you don't factor that in. So that was one thing. And then I think Becky brought it up, but the capacity analysis, will that include the forty B starting to be, um, have residents? Is that gonna be part of their capacity analysis?
So yes, it can and, um, TEC actually was the peer review engineer who did the traffic study when we had the forty B before the zoning board of appeals, so they do have that information available. So I, I'm of the understanding that it would include such, but I can make sure that that's noted, just so that we can make sure it's covered.
Okay, that's all I had.
That's it. You good, Ed? All, all set. Anybody else? All right. Let's move on to the hundred and seventy-fifth parade update.
So you'll see in your packet that there is a memo from Annie, who has been the lead on this particular project. So we have the float sign-ups, we have about forty-three groups that have registered to participate. Uh, we have posted the parade detour notice and we also just posted that up on our website. And also she did want me to mention that, uh, for those of you who are looking to walk with us at the parade, if there was a way for you to stay around so that Senator Tar and Representative Ramos could present the town with a resolution commemorating the town on its celebration of its one hundred and seventy-fifth. And that is going to be taking place down at the Pines Recreation Area. There's a DJ tent that they typically have for the event, so they're gonna have a microphone there. And the Senator and Representative want to say a couple of words, so if we could have the members of the Select Board present so that they can actually physically present the resolution to the board, it would be great. So she just asked if you could potentially do that. Um, so again, the lineup for the parade starts at eight AM and that is going to be along School Street. And the parade starts at nine AM and will end at ten AM and it will end again at the Pines Recreation Area so that we can begin the celebration of Groveland Day at ten AM to three PM on Saturday. And there's also festivities happening on Friday. There is the Battle of the Badges as well as the cornhole tournament. And there's going to be food trucks and other activities, uh, taking place. And again, that's gonna be down at the Pines.
Okay.
And I noticed that she invited people down there to.
Friday night, yeah.
Yeah, Friday night to go over all the logistics of lining up and everything, which, uh, which is probably a good thing to, to go to. And they're gonna have a beer truck and a food truck and.
So you'll go?
Oh, yeah, so I'm gonna go.
That's all it took.
It's all it took.
He'll be there.
It'll be fun. I can watch all the people and the five K and go to the food truck and get a beer.
There you go.
Any other questions about the parade update?
Just hope for good weather. Did you order good weather for Saturday?
We're trying.
Okay, so make sure. Thank you.
I have a thing I say.
Rain or shine, I'm good.
Don't look at the forecast, just don't look and it'll be fine.
Yeah.
Just don't start checking. Not yet, it's too, too far away.
And next is for green tips.
Um, yes, so I did send in some pictures and if you want to put it on the television, I don't know, um, for, uh, books and things you need to get rid of. And, you know, I know families with children have small books and sometimes you're thinking, I just don't want these anymore. Um, I don't want to save them anymore. Uh, we do have a book donation, um, bin that I did find over by the tea garden. You do have to pull into their parking lot to use it really, because you should not stop on School Street. That would be a no-no. But, um, books are heavy and books, um, increase tonnage. You know, when you start to think of things that can help the town and help the town budget, things that are heavy that go into trash can be put into that bin. Um, it's a good-sized bin, it's right down the back corner, kind of visible from Salem Street and visible from School Street, but easy to go flying by, uh, the way traffic is nowadays. So just wanted to bring that to people's awareness. There's also a donation clothing bin there as well. But I believe you said there was another bin Rebecca that might also take books, but I wasn't aware of that one.
Correct, we have a contract with CMRK for three of our textile bins and they also. Correct. We have a contract with CMRK for three of our textile bins and they also accept books at those locations.
So the bin that's at the water and sewer department parking lot?
Correct. The one that's over at the water and sewer department, the one that's over at Beazie. And then the other location is at the Bagnow Elementary School in the upper parking lot.
Okay. And are they labeled books?
They are.
Okay. I just did not see that.
Acceptable items. It's listed as such, and they also have a QR code that you can scan and that gives you a list of things that they accept as well.
Okay. So maybe we can, on the T, when the committee meets, we're meeting next week. We'll brainstorm on some ways to get this communication out, get a map out, maybe. Maybe with this, the scan code that you already have on the recycle bins, you could also have a, a map pop up that shows where you can put clothing and books.
We do have a map that's on the website on the trash and recycling page. We are looking to update that particular page to make it a little bit more user friendly and also, um, so you can find information a little bit more easier. There is a ton of information on that page, which makes it very overwhelming. Uh, but we do have that map and we can make sure that we're correctly displaying it so that people can find the information that they're looking for, specifically if they're looking for a textile drop off location.
Right. But if they scan the code that's on their recycle bin, that tells them what they can put in the recycle bin.
Correct.
Could it give them a map of other recycling containers in town for other things?
I'll have to check with the company. It is a static link that they have and it is for CMRK. It's not linking to our website or any list that we put together.
Yeah.
But I can ask the vendor if they have a way or if they would be willing to provide a link to our website that has that information or if they would be willing to add that to their link or if there's anything that they can do on, on their end. But I think it's just kind of like, again, like a, a generic list. It's not anything catered specifically towards Groveland or this particular site.
Okay. So maybe, um, we can talk about that at the trash and recycle because I think honestly that like with the attention span that most people have nowadays, we're really busy. We only have a few minutes going on to the website. I'm not trying to be critical and I know there's probably stuff we should take off our website, but, um, it's just, it's time consuming to try to find stuff sometimes. And if there was a, like a quick thing that we could type in that says, donate Groveland and have that pop up, you know, like that, so people could get to it really fast somehow. Maybe on our town Facebook page. I don't know. Just somewhere that it's really fast and easy. So when your phone in your hand, you can just type donate Groveland. It would pop up with all the places where you can donate things.
We can definitely accommodate if the trash and recycling committee want to take the lead in assembling all the locations and everything of where they need to go. We can just take that information and put it up on the website for you.
Well, you, you are good making the maps. We don't know how to make the maps unless Stephanie knows how to make the maps. I don't know how to make a map like you make a map.
And we will put together.
Stephanie is good at making the maps.
And Stephanie's good on the maps?
I think she's very good at making maps.
Okay. Well, she can do it. Then fine.
There you go. Stephanie, you've been volunteered.
Voluntold.
Voluntold.
She's probably downtown town at the restaurant. Okay. And now, so that is, the green tip was that, but now I'm going to try to expand on it for everybody in town. And especially we have so many new people moving in, make it really easy to find all the different locations where you can get rid of stuff.
Your green tip?
I do not have one prepared today.
Steve?
I do not have one today.
Ed? No, no. I would just like to elaborate on the green tip that I read about Best Buy taking TVs and things like that.
Oh, I meant.
I made a mention to call ahead and make sure you do because they don't take TVs unless they are Insignia or the other brand that they make, Decman. And they charge $30.
They do charge 30. Yeah. My husband found that out. Yeah.
As did I.
Is it the size that makes them charge or is it, um, the TV?
I brought multiples, just the TV in general.
Okay.
So yes, uh, it's still a good resource to use.
Yeah.
I know that, um, Troop 87 still does theirs and I'd probably go there and pay them.
Yep.
Just because it's a good cause. It helps them, uh, raise some funds. All right. Next we have appointments and resignations. So we have an appointment. So I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Canesario of Groveland to the zoning board of appeals effective September 2nd, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. I think we, we thank Brian for stepping up. Thank you. And we also have approval of the minutes. Did anybody have any edits or mistakes that they caught in the minutes? Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 7th, July 21st and August 4th, 2025.
Wait, was I there for all those? Hang on. I might.
Do believe.
I was there for that one, the 7th. But what about? I thought I missed one. I think it was one at the end of August. You might be right. Oh, yeah. I was at that one. Okay. Yeah, I was there. That's fine.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. No old or unfinished business? No other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? And that brings us to town administrative time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to update the board on the Salem Street dam. So we did hear back from the National Heritage Endangered Species Program and they gave us a favorable review. Um, there's just a few specific conditions that they wanted the town to follow. In summary, there is protecting the blending turtles and not lowering the water between September 15th and April 15th. Obviously, the work, the majority of the work has already taken place and that was in the beginning of July. So we are on part with, uh, on path with complying with the conditions. Native plantings, they want all of the seeds and plants used for restoration outside of the maintained lawn to be native to Groveland. Um, there's also, uh, a condition that we must be careful to ensure that the seeds and plants, uh, we use do not include any state listed endangered or threatened species. And then there's the final compliance report. So all of this information has been shared with the conservation commission and we expect them to review this condition and hopefully issue an order of condition at their next meeting on September 13th. Uh, once we have received their approval, then we can finish the remaining, uh, items that we have, which include, you know, stabilizing the site, putting up the guard rail, getting rid of the pathway down, uh, and also reinforcing the buttress that they've started to put together. For the Shanahan Gate and signage, I did send an email out or my bi-weekly email to the board, just letting you know that the signs have been put up at the, on Main Street in front of the soccer fields. So we did have, uh, a discussion as to whether or not they should be on the poles or their individual posts. The highway department had requested that they go on the actual utility poles because it's easier for them to plow. We also, at that point in time, had ordered the materials for the fencing to close off the, the gate as requested by the board. It had not come in, but it has since come in. So we have installed, um, the fence that goes around to the private property to discourage people from going around the fence and also discouraging people to go on private property, which is not property that we own. That is the abutting property owner's, um, land in addition to the gate. So all of that has taken place. We did hear from the soccer league and they were disappointed with the changes that we made. Um, but we did explain to them why the actions were taken and that we have provided them alternative parking, which should improve the vehicle access and also the pedestrian flow to and from the field. As part of that conversation, we also talked a little bit about the bathroom facilities. This is something that we brought up at a, a prior meeting. So the bathrooms were a project that was applied for by a former president of the Groveland New Soccer Fields. And so they received funding from CPC to construct those bathrooms. We found that they weren't exactly constructed according to the plan that was submitted as part of the CPC. But at the same time, what was constructed was more of an RV style building and it also includes a tight tank that needs to be pumped. So sewer is right in the middle of Main Street, so it doesn't really necessarily make the most sense. I've heard different theories about the sewer being a little too deep and it being expensive to dig that deep. I've heard that, you know, the highway department at that point in time mentioned that they would be willing to help. So the routine maintenance of this facility is not sustainable. The other issue is like the Knox Building, but not like the Knox Building. This is a town property. And in this particular case, this is a town building. So regardless of CPC monies were applied for through the Groveland New Soccer, they do not own that building. We own the building. So we are responsible and liable for that building. So we need to make sure that we're maintaining the building and it's safe and it's also sanitary. Um, so right now we have one particular unit within the facility that is not functioning and we have to close that off for use. So we need to lock that side of the bathroom. So in talking about the longer term plans, it makes sense to try and put a new facility in there that connects to the sewer. Uh, it also would be easier for longer term maintenance, cleaning, um, et cetera, and would also be handicap accessible. So we are looking to collaborate with the soccer leagues that utilize the field, both the Groveland New Soccer, Penntucket New Soccer, as well as there's a summer camp, um, that also utilizes or some clinic that uses the field as well to try and figure out the best pathway forward and collaborate on what we would do, uh, to have a better facility at that particular location or to just remove the facility. And like we do at Washington Park, they can have a porter potty that they bring to the site for the season and they can pay for the use of that and the removal of that. So all things that we're having a conversation about, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention since there was some tensions with the back and forth and, you know, just, I think, again, the general misunderstanding that, you know, it is our facility. It is our property. So if something were to happen, that comes back to the town. So just because somebody applied for CPC funding doesn't mean that they own that. And that's really important, especially when we're talking about, you know, not pumping the tank and other really, um, serious sanitary issues that have come about specifically with this particular facility. The last update is just in regards to the skate park and let you all know that we have finally held our pre-construction meeting with Spawn Ranch. We're really excited and they are going to be starting construction on September 22nd. Uh, you may see the highway department out there a little bit sooner as there is some site prep work that they need to do. So they will be stripping the soil and compacting the site prior to Spawn Ranch coming on, uh, to begin the construction. But the construction is expected to be completed by the end of December, so 2025. And then as part of the routine memo, I have my ongoing projects, field use permits, uh, upcoming dates, specifically noting again, the 175th celebration, Groveland Day, uh, procurement, technical review conferences, which there were none. And then some meetings, events and seminars. If any of you have additional questions or would like additional information, I'm happy to provide it.
Does anybody have any questions for Rebecca?
Just on the ongoing projects, the, the Valley Screw building, it's called Something Manufacturing, right? Is the actual name of it, I think in the settlement data. But the fence is still cut open at the back of the property that the church owns. So I'm assuming, I didn't go through the hole, but I'm assuming that the hole that goes all the way through to the other building is probably still there. So I was just wondering, like, for abandoned buildings in our town, do we have a bylaw or is there a state law? What is the requirement for the owners to make sure that these abandoned buildings are sealed up so that young people who are curious don't get in there and something happens?
So the site at Valley Screw, those breaches in the fence have been repaired and they have been reviewed by the building commissioner who did in, issue enforcement against the property owner to make sure that they maintain those particular areas and secure those areas. The fence over at the, uh, church side from 150 Center into the former EPA, Mass EP well treatment building, that's a little trickier because it is an abandoned building, but it's not the same situation as the Valley Screw property, which is falling in on itself and a hazard. Um, they have secured the building in the sense that you cannot open the doors for the vacant building. It is private property. People should not be trespassing. But to your point, we have been trying to figure out exactly what resources we have available to us to make sure that the church secures that property. But again, it doesn't fall into the same territory as the Valley Screw building and that property owner has complied with the enforcement letter that was issued by the building commissioner.
Okay. So we don't consider it dangerous at all to have an abandoned building that's fenced off and there's a large hole cutting the fence and I'm assuming not by an adult. So we know, we know what's going on. We know young people are getting in there. And there's no responsibility for the property owner to at least check the property periodically or anything? I mean, nothing?
It's private property. The church owns the property.
Yes.
The building is not a hazard. It's locked. The fence has a hole in it. So no different than a fence having a hole in it on private property of a, a, a single family dwelling. If you have somebody who's trespassing on your property, climbing through a hole that's in your fence that you haven't repaired, there's not necessarily something we can do unless there's something that's on the property that, that's deemed a hazard and where the building is locked and it's not falling down on itself. If somebody wants to trespass on private property, it's very difficult for us to get involved. Whereas again, the Valley Screw, to your point, very much a different case, like that, that is, there's holes in the ceiling. The, the building walls are falling out of itself.
Right.
That's more of a hazard and it allows the building commissioner, under his jurisdiction and authority, to say, you need to secure your site and you need to do it now or else enforcement will be taken. And he's done that. But the building behind, that's where we're kind of struggling to figure out what authority we have to make the church do anything with that property at this point in time.
Because it's my understanding that we can't even require them to have a fence around that building.
Okay. So we can't require them, but we can't easily check the fence around the Valley Screw building, um, because of their fence. So for all we know, they've gone back through and cut in that fence again into Valley Screw. If that was the original intent was to get all the way through to the collapsing building because that's more exciting to look at. It's, it's just, to me, seems to be something that we're aware of and we don't have any real way to check the Valley Screw building. And, and I don't blame us. I blame the, the EPA for leaving that hazard in the middle of our town and saying, well, there's really nothing dangerous there. And yet dirt floor inside has never been sampled, right? So we don't know. So is it just a nysor or is this a town hazard waiting to get down to our well again? Or a young person to get injured? I just don't know how long we're supposed to sit patiently by these two property owners don't check their property.
So we can send a letter. I think it wouldn't, you know, be an issue if we just kindly asked the archdiocese to take a look at the fence as we've noticed that there's breaches in their fence and maybe potentially address them. I don't believe, again, we have any jurisdiction for enforcement, but we could just kindly let them know that, you know, and reinforcing the site at the Valley Screw, we did notice that they had some, you know, breaches in their fence as well. And to your point about the EPA and the Mass EP, we, we recently sent again correspondence asking them for assistance. I have reached out to Mass Development. Uh, Mass Development has been very successful with Brown's Field Site, but to the point that we mentioned at a previous meeting, unfortunately, they are not funds that we can utilize because it's not deemed a Brown's Field Site. It's a super fund site. So we've tried to ask them to de-list the building so that we can capitalize on that additional funding through Brown's Field money to remove and demolish the building. Uh, but again, it, we have not been successful. So we are, uh, enlisting the help of Mass Deep, uh, excuse, Mass Development. And we've also reached out to Secretary Augustus. We've reached out to Senator Tar, Representative Ramos. Uh, we reached out to, uh, Congresswoman, um, Congressman Molten. And then also Senator Warren's office just recently was another conversation that we had to try and see if there's anything that they can do to help us leverage, uh, any resources or to, to see if there's anything that they can do to help us move this along. So we have been given up on our end. We continue to advocate, but to your point, it's been slow moving as it has been, as you know, since you've been fighting this battle for many years, uh, there hasn't been much, much break in the, in the case.
Yeah, I, I understand. You're pushing all the buttons you can push. I just, um, I'm concerned because when you read like the history of what happened there, yes, they came in and they created the building to clean the water, but nothing was done to address the residents who drank that water. And yes, they have some test well sites, I believe, still in place, but I don't know whether we get those results all the time or do they just get the results? And again, to the point, when you read the description of that, um, the, the manufacturing building, the floor in the basement was dirt, I believe. If that was dirt and they were dumping things in and around the building, the likelihood of there being contaminants in that dirt floor is, I would say, very high. And now that the roof is collapsing, now you're adding water to the dirt floor. I just, I mean, to me, it's just like, come on. What are you going to wait for? Wait for our well to be shut down again? Is, is that what we wait for? I, I just don't know what else to do. If, if there's something as a select board member that I can do, please let me know. I'm, I'm just frustrated with this and, and very concerned that they wait till something bad happens and then they do something.
So our next course of action internally has been through discussions with. So our next course of action internally has been through discussions with myself, um, the executive coordinator and the building commissioner, is to put together a comprehensive list of what we've done to date to try and advance this project and try and show Mass EP, the EPA and other stakeholders, you know, we, we've done this and we hit this wall. We've done this and we hit this wall. We've done this and we hit this wall. And let them know each individual step that we've been trying to take, each different angle that we've been trying to play and figure out exactly what else they want us to do, to your point, to throw our hands up and say, we've done everything we potentially could except for foreclose on the property and accept a liability that we have no way of paying for. And so we're begging and pleading the state and the federal government to help us at least identify a course of action that we can take and make actual forward progress in finding an, a long-term solution. So right now that's kind of where we are. I mean, it might be a lost cause, but I think it does establish a pathway forward to show them everything that we've done instead of having to be like, oh, I remember when they did this and remember when this person was a select board member and what about this? And so it's all clearly documented, everything that's been done, every enforcement order that Sam has issued, every correspondence that has come back from the attorney about them addressing that concern so that they can show legally our hands, like you said, are tied. Like what are we supposed to do? You, you came in, you cleaned this up and you left us with something that we can't do anything with.
They cleaned, they cleaned up the outs, the water flow outside the building. But inside the building, given the age of it, asbestos probably, right? Right? Asbestos, certainly. Bagnol is asbestos, right? And the roof is collapsing, water is coming in. I guess I would, I would ask them to explain to, to our town, if we can, why this is not a hazard for us. Please tell us why this is not a hazard. I, I'd like to know that. I don't have the chemical jargon for the words, but I'd like to know why it's, we should not be worried about what's going on there.
You can ask?
And can we ask them that question and get him writing that, how they can guarantee us that there's nothing that's going to come flowing down from that building into the ground through the dirt floor in the bottom down to our well?
Consider it done.
Thank you. And thank you also. I know you've done way more than has ever been done except for the actual cleanup. Um, because everybody keeps saying, well, we can't touch that building. It's, all the fines will land on us and our taxpayers. Um, and I, what, what is the amount of money they told us we'd have to pay if we wanted to take it by tax title? It was issued.
There's a lien that the EPA has on the building and then there's a lien that Mass EP has on the building in addition to, um, the unpaid taxes. So it's, I'm not certain about what the liens are for Mass EP and EPA. I think it's over a million dollars, but I know for the tax title accounts, it was something like $327,000. I don't know if that was including interest or not.
But that's not the stumbling block. It's the, the EPA and the DP, DEP liens.
And they're willing to forgive those, which is great, but they want us to take responsibility for further environmental testing and additional soil evaluations. That is something that we don't have the money to pay for. So without resources or grants that they would offer, we find ourselves with our hands tied again, saying, well, that's great, but we can't comply with what you're asking us to do.
Right. So they should partner with us to do it.
That's what we're trying for, but you, you bring up a very good point asking the question, are they, are they going to take the responsibility for further contamination due to their negligence and not finding a solution to take down the building and to finally remedy the site?
Right, to seal that site up.
Right, which is also one of the reasons why we reached out to, um, Secretary Augustus with the housing because of 150 Main Street and that being an entrance way to get in there. That was hopefully to help leverage that since the state wanted more housing and we had plans in place that could potentially put housing down there. So we've worked a lot of different angles on that, for sure.
I think sometimes asking the question, getting and making them answer that question, you know?
Well, I think, I think it's really simple. They're not going to answer it because they're not going to make that guarantee. If they were, they wouldn't ask us to do the testing.
Well, let them say that.
Absolutely.
Ed?
All right, yeah, just two questions on that for Rebecca. Is, is that still considered a Brownfield site?
No, they will only classify it as a super fund site.
And you mentioned the, the liens that the EPA has, et cetera, and the tax lien. Which, which, which is top priority? Which is, which goes first?
For the Mass EP and EPA?
Yeah, the, the, do the taxes come first or do they come first?
The liens come first.
Okay.
That's it? Okay. Anybody else?
Um, I just had a couple of comments slash questions. I was a little disappointed to see that the Groveland U Soccer League was disappointed with the change in the parking lot. Was it just out of, because of convenience of being able to park on the side and sneak through that gate?
I think so.
Okay. Um, I get it, but I was just, that was a little disappointing to read that. Uh, and then I see in here the YMCA summer camp recap, so I know it was the first year. Was it overall successful?
So overall, the feedback was positive. So I asked for Tracy, who's our contact over at the YMCA, to put together a little bit more information in regards to how many families they had and how many returning counselors and to provide a little bit more of the data so that we can share that. So that's actually going to be at one of your upcoming meetings. So you'll have all of that information. But the overall, um, feedback so far was great. A lot of the families had a, a great experience. I think the only negative takeaway she had found with the survey that they issued to all of the families is that a few, um, and you all know this intimately, is that they didn't really have field trips because that's not really what they do. Um, but they did see that a lot of families took advantage of some of their other locations that they have for more outdoor activities, um, like, like rock climbing and other kayaking and canoeing and stuff. So a lot of families were really appreciative of the fact that while they couldn't go on uh, field trips, they could take advantage of those programs elsewhere, which was kind of like a field trip. Um, but that was the only negative takeaway that was actually noted as part of the survey.
And you think they'll do it again next year? You think this?
They seem to be on board with trying to partner. Um, I know that they're also working with some of the other surrounding municipalities that find themselves in a similar situation. I think the latest one that I heard was Georgetown. Um, so I made it very clear that we would definitely like to have them back. Um, I didn't hear any negative feedback from the school, uh, with the building, but they are going to reach back out to them as well to make sure that they had no issues. Um, but overall, uh, we definitely were supportive of them returning and it sounded like they were supportive of, or, or accepting of returning.
Nice, okay. That's great.
Steve?
Just in terms of the regional dispatch, is there any update on how that project is going?
So we're still moving forward. They are actually in the process of going through and asking both the police chief and the fire chief for all the specifics and all of the, uh, different things that they need in order to put in proper orders for equipment and for infrastructure that they need to add. So they're still going through that process. They're still meeting, um, but we still seem to be on target. There hasn't been anything that delayed us so far. Uh, we are looking to try and move forward with the, uh, the door system first so that we can see if we can have that help us in the interim because as, um, there was another resignation for dispatcher. So we do have one full-time dispatcher. Another dispatcher is going to actually go to the police academy. So we're going to be losing another one in October. Um, so trying to move forward with the door system, um, and hooking up to the regional dispatch during, um, later night hours would be beneficial for staffing needs. Um, but we haven't necessarily seen any hiccups with any of the process as of date. So I believe that their next up, uh, meeting is in a week or two weeks and I'll have a lot more information to share. And that's going to be the first meeting with all of the communities that are part of the, uh, regional dispatch. So it should be really interesting to see how they, um, conduct their meetings and some of the topics and welcome Groveland on board and if they have anything else in the pipeline for some of the other surrounding communities too. So I'll have more to update the board on, but I'll definitely make sure I, I check in on the progress. But so far from my understanding, everything's going smoothly.
That's great. Awesome. All right, with that done, we'll move on to the select board time and reports. Ed, do you have anything?
Uh, just, uh, yeah, a couple of shout-outs and a question for Rebecca. Uh, we still schedule for, uh, the next meeting, the, uh, like an open meeting, uh, on the trash. Uh, okay. Uh, I know that's got changed a couple of times, but, uh, look, I did, I think a shout-out to, uh, a couple of these employees. Uh, the, uh, the groundskeeper or superintendent over at the cemetery, that cemetery looking, looking fantastic. Uh, and people have mentioned it. He does a great job of mowing. Uh, it, and I know that even though we have had, had a lack of rain, but, uh, there is some, uh, some areas there which, which is growing and he, uh, he's got it all, all weed whacked around the gravestones and, and that's, that's looked great up there for the, for the summer, but he, he's, he's done a great job. Maybe you can pass that on to him.
Of course.
Also, uh, I think it was this past week, the highway department, uh, cut and brush and, uh, down here on Main Street, uh, it was overhanging the sidewalks, cut that back, looks terrific and, and, and removing the, uh, uh, the vegetation that come up through the gutters and that, uh, I mean, they certainly were, could have got dunked in the river and cleaned themselves up. They were, they, they were sweating and they were, the, the dust was just sticking right to them. But they, they did a great job. It looks, looks fantastic out there and, uh, nice job. So that's all I got.
Steve?
Just the, um, just one thing, just a reminder to everybody that school's back in session as of today. So obviously there's a lot more kids and buses and things like that on the road. There's also, you know, been some changes to bus routes. So just pay attention, be careful. Remind, if you have younger drivers at home, remind them to do the same.
Becky?
I have nothing this week.
Nothing today? Wow.
Yeah, I know, I know. Shocking.
Kathy?
No, not much. I think, um, I think the town overall is looking really good for the big parade and celebration. And the cemetery, yes, looks great, but he also does the Pines Recreation, right? And the, the land here at the town hall and the base, the baseball field, the soccer field and everything else. So one person, one person. So we've got a very hardworking staff in this building and outside this building and, I for one, as a resident, just as a plain old ordinary resident, I'm very grateful, um, that we have such kind, dedicated staff. I've never had a problem calling and asking a question or getting some help with something. We're just lucky that way.
Right, I know I definitely want to give a shout-out to the Groveland Day Committee, the Parade Committee, Annie and Rebecca, because they've really done a lot of hard work at putting this together and I expect it to be spectacular. So I do encourage everybody to come and watch and join in the festive festivities. And with that, we'll go to cor, uh, correspondence. We have the resignation of Colin Stokes as Water and Sewer Superintendent. Congratulations, Colin.
Have they started, uh, post, they post, uh, posted job yet?
Not yet. I'm looking to post the job tomorrow.
It, um, oh, um, isn't it the, uh, Water and Sewer Commissioners that make the hire there?
It is not. It, it typically has fallen to the select board, but with the passage of the town administrator bylaw, it will now fall to my office.
That's it? Good.
So just by way of procedure, um, with the, the letter is in our correspondence, do we vote on it at the next meeting? Is that it? Or what, or do you just?
So because you're no longer the appointing authority, I left it as correspondent.
You just accepted. I understand.
So if the board would like to change that, there's recourse, but?
I just wanted the clarification. Okay.
Uh, we also have information from the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, a draft regulation for on-site cannabis consumption. Um, I know, uh, that might be big for you, Ed, and you might want to attend the 12th?
Public hearing? The, the eighth?
Eighth. Or at least send, uh, letters because it's going to be accepting until the, uh, the 12th. Because I know that, uh, that's something that you're not necessarily on board with. And, uh, maybe with, uh, our future discussions on the establishment of retail selling, we could, uh, discuss it as well. But I don't think we'll have enough time to, to get into the comment as a group. But if, uh, individually you're interested, I recommend, uh, reading it and anybody in the public that's interested in seeing what, uh, Massachusetts is proposing to read it and, and put in their two cents.
May I ask a question on clarification? This, I think, was it, um, our old lawyer team or we still use K, KP Law, we still use them somewhat? They did a, a seminar or something, a bulletin on it. There's a lot of rules that we have to follow, like fairness, kind, this particular type of business. There seems to be a lot of very specific steps and things that you have to make sure you follow so that you don't get in trouble trying to allow that kind of a business. Even if the, if the town says, yes, you, there's very intensive steps. Who would be responsible for supervising all those, um, procedures? The pro, the process looks very complex. You have to allow for a certain amount of time for people to apply. Then you have to review each application. There's this whole equity fairness thing. Am I off base here? Am I reading the wrong thing from the KP Law? I, it was very complicated.
No, you're correct. I know at the, uh, if you look at, um, uh, I think it was, uh, older unfinished business, they still had that item listed. I haven't had an opportunity to get to that particular item yet.
Okay.
But I do have an outline drafted of when we first accepted, uh, what the first state ballot vote, when we accepted for recreational marijuana. I have when we, um, only approved medical. So I'm, I'm starting to put that, all the details together. And then we do have a, a, a social equity policy for cannabis that we were required to adopt at one point in time. So I'm just trying to get like as much information as I possibly can on the sheet as to what would, what we've done and what would be required and what the steps would be so that then the board can ultimately weigh whether or not that's something that you want to consider. And I am trying to have a meeting with Merrimack and the town administrator over there because they have, um, a facility, a recreational facility. So, you know, I'm trying to get a better understanding of the revenue that's generated from the sale of the cannabis as well as what an agreement, um, like a host agreement might look like, especially now given the changes and, and what's happening with the Cannabis Control Commission and some of the things you're pointing to. So that might kind of weigh into the decision-making process as well. So right now I'm just trying to gather as much information as I possibly can and throw it down, all, all down on paper and give us a starting point at least so that we can just figure out our pathway forward. But honestly, I, I haven't gotten to that. I'm still working on a couple of other items, but it's definitely in the works.
Right. Okay.
And you're definitely right. There's a lot of different things that happen all at once and different requirements and, you know, things that we have to adhere to.
Okay.
But this is more geared towards like the ABC, the alcohol establishment in terms of consumption bars and things like that. This is a marijuana bar that they're talking about here. So it's a little bit different.
Exactly.
It's not the retail.
So this was the only reason I included it as your correspondence is because we've been talking about recreational retail marijuana and this is a recent change that's going to impact a lot of different communities. So I just figured that it would be best to keep you informed of the discussion that's happening in and around, um, the state and the region. So it's not necessarily anything that we're doing, just again, trying to keep you informed as information comes out.
Okay.
And unless anybody else has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One quick thing.
Yes.
We didn't set any goals for the select board for this year. We typically try to get to that as we hit the fall before the budget starts. And we talked about, um, the town administrator, um, review thing that we might, um, want to modify that document. If that's going to be done, I think it has to be done fairly quickly right now because it wouldn't be fair to use it if the town administrator doesn't see it until right, you know? That wouldn't make sense. So, um, we have to set up what we're going to have for the evaluation process, what document we're going to use, and then of course our own, what is, what does the select board see as its primary goals?[1772.86]